On the resurrection day, three questions were asked by three different groups of people.
पुनरुत्थान दिनाना मूड़ रकालायन प्रजलो मूड़ रकालायन प्रश्न अडूटू वच्चर.
So we will briefly look at them.
मानो क्लुप्तंगवाट निचुद्धमु.
And then we will meditate on one appearance of Jesus that is related to the Lord's table.
आतर्वता प्रभु बलकी मानकी साहेकारण उड़नट्लिगा एसु प्रभावरिका प्रत्यक्षण गुरिंचि मनोध्यानिद्दम.
The first question.
मोदती प्रश्न.
The book of Mark, chapter sixteen.
मार्क सुवाता पदहार अज्जायम.
Verses, let us read verse two, three and four, or maybe one to four.
One to four. वकट नुंडी नाल गुवच्छनाल वर्कु मार्क सुवाता पदहार अज्जायम वगट नुंचे नाल गुवच्छनाल वर्कु मान माच माचित सदुकुन्नम. विसरांति दिनमु कटिच्छ पोगाने मग्दले नमरिययु, याकोब तल्याय नमरिययु, सलोमयु वच्ची आयनुनु पुय, आयनुकु पुय वल्ननी सुगंध द्रव्यमु लुकुनिरि. सदोनी मी भागन बिगरगा. नाल गुवच्छनम्, वारु वच्ची कन्नुलेति चौड़गा राय इपोरलिंपो बड़ी उड़ुटा चूचिरि, आराय यंतो पद्धदि?
We read the question in verse three.
मुड़ वच्छनोलम मानो योका प्रश्न चुस्तो उन्नम.
Who shall roll away the stone from the door of the sepulchre?
समाधि द्वारमु नुंडी मानकोरकु आराय यावडु पोरलिंचुनो?
This was the question that was in the hearts and minds of these women.
योका स्त्रीलयोका मनसुलो वारिका ह्रोदेमलो उन्ना प्रश्न इदि.
They brought sweet spices to anoint the body of Jesus.
एसु कृष्ण प्रभावरिका देहमुनकु पुयटानिके सुगंध द्रव्याली तीस्कुन वच्चर.
Very early in the morning, they came with such great devotion and with such passion and love for the Lord Jesus.
पेंदल कडने आयका उदयाना, वारु प्रभु पट्लन्तो प्रेमतो आयका स्थलानिक वारु वच्चुन्नार.
But now they are faced with this great problem.
आइते इप्पुर वारी योका गोप्पा समस्य नेदुर कुन्नार.
It is like a goliath before them.
वारी मुंदै इदि गोलियात वेले कनपड़तु उन्नि.
They were weak, no doubt.
वारु चाला बलिहिन्नु अनुमानमेले दु.
And so they are, they are asking, they are talking among themselves.
वारलो वार माट्लाड कुन्ता उन्नार.
Who shall roll away this stone from the door of the sepulchre?
समाधि द्वारमु नुंडी मानकोरकु आराय यावडु पोरलिंचुनो?
As they were speaking among themselves.
आविदंगवार माट्लाड कुन्तु उड़ुंडिगा.
The answer came from heaven itself.
परलोकमु नुंडे समाधानमु वारिको चिंदि.
Matthew, chapter twenty-eight.
मथेसुवाता यरवय यन्मिदो अज्जायम.
And verse two.
रेंडा वच्छनम्, मथेसुवाता यरवय यन्मिदो अज्जायम रेंडा वच्छनम्, इदिगो प्रभु दूता परलोकमु नुंडी दिगिवच्ची, राय पोरलिंचि, दानिमेदा कुच्चुंडेनो, अपुर महाभूकंपमु कलिगेनो.
The angel of the Lord descended from heaven and rolled away the stone.
प्रभु दूता परलोकमु नुंडी दिगिवच्ची राय इनु पोरलिंचेनो.
So many of us, we also are faced with such problems in our life.
माने योका जीवितालो अलांटि समस्य निमानु चाला मन्दि एदुर कुन्ता उन्नम.
We think there is no solution for this great problem that is before me.
नाने नेदुर कुन्तना योका गोप्पा समस्यकु समाधानमु ले दु अनन अन्कुन्तम.
There is a song in English.
इंग्लिश लोक पाट उन्नि.
That says, God is bigger than all my problems.
नासमस्य लन्निटिकंटे देवुडु गोप्पवाडु पद्धवाडु.
Bigger than any mountain.
आयन परवतंकंटे उन्नतुडु.
So this was a great stone at the door of the sepulchre.
यी समाधि द्वारमु नदुन्ना यी राय चाला पद्धदि.
And these women, they were talking among themselves, who is going to roll away this stone now?
यी स्त्रीलु वारलो वार माट्लाड कुन्ता उन्नार, यावडु समाधि द्वारमु नुंडी राय इनु दुर्लिस्तार.
Dear brothers and sisters, on the resurrection day, let us be reminded that there is nothing that is impossible with God.
प्रिय सोधर्डा सोधरी, यी पुनरुत्थान दिनाना मानो ग्नाप्कुन जस्को वाली, देवुनिकी असाज्जिमाइंदि एदि कुड़ा ले दु.
With men, this is, this is, with men this is impossible, but with God, all things are possible.
मानुनिकैते असाज्जिमाइंनु उन्नि कानि, देवुनिकी समस्तमु साज्जिमु.
Maybe your heart is filled with fear this morning, I don't know what kind of fear.
वकेलाय यी उदेकाल समयमलो मीरो कुन्तमंदी कुन्रकालायन भयाल कलिगुण्डोत्सु, अलांटि भयं कलिगुण्नार नाल तेली.
Fear of the future.
बौछेतुन गुरिंचिना भयं.
Fear of your health.
आरोग्यमु गुरिंचिना भयं.
Fear of, of your education.
नियोका सदुनु गुरिंचिना भयमु.
There may be different kinds of fear that you must be, that you might be having questions in your hearts.
इन्नो प्रश्नलु रकरकाला भयालुनु नियोका ह्रोदेमलो कलिगुण्डोत्सु.
But if you are a man and a woman who is devoted and love the Lord.
देवुनी प्रेमिंचेलेका देवुनिकु भयपड़े व्यक्ति वी स्त्री पुरुष्नु वायनट्लाइते.
God looks into your heart.
देवुडु नियोका ह्रोदियानि चुस्ता उन्नार.
He is able to meet every need that you, that seems to be too big for you.
नीकैंतो पद्धदि अन्पिस्तुना प्रति अवसत्नायन तिर्चगाल्डु.
The angel was sent from heaven and rolled away the stone for them.
परलोकमु नुंडी दूता पंपो बड़ी, आयका राय इनु दुर्लिंचि वेसिन्दि.
Nobody could ever think of such an answer.
अलांटि समाधान ओसुन्ने वार ऊहिंचले दु.
Because the stone was sealed with a Roman seal.
इन्दिकंटे रोमीलु वारिका मुद्रुत्वादि मुद्रिंचे बड़िदा राय.
They set a watch over it.
वार अकड़ा सैनिकले कापलागा उन्चर.
But nobody could stop Jesus from coming, from rising up from the grave, from that tomb.
आयका समाधिलो नुंडी एसु प्रभावर लेवटानी यावडु कुड़ा आपलाक्पयार.
So, we have many questions in our hearts.
माने ह्रोदियाले इन्नो प्रश्न उड़ड़वत्सु.
In the wilderness.
अरण्यमलो.
In John, chapter six.
योहन सुवाता आर अज्जायम.
Philip is faced with such a great challenge.
फिलिप्पु इलांटि गोप्पा सवाल नेदुर कुन्नार.
There is a great multitude coming.
गोप्पा जनसमुहु उच्चुन्नार.
And Jesus says, you have to feed them.
एसु प्रभु चेपड़ु मीरु वारिकु बोजनुम पेटंडियन चेपड़ु.
Philip is calculating.
फिलिप्पय अडूताउन्नार, फिलिप्प अडूतुन्नार.
He says in verse seven.
एड़ा वच्छनम्, अंदुकु फिलिप्पु वारलो प्रतिवाडुनु, कुन्छम् कुन्छम् पुच्चुकुन्टकायननु, रुण्डु वंदला देनारमलो रोटलु चालुवनी, आयन तोच्चेप्पनु.
And then in verse nine, we see what Andrew says.
तुमिदा वच्छनमलो अंद्रे चेप्तुन्नार, इकड़ा उन्ना योका चिन्नवानियोद्दा, आइदु यावला रोटलु, रुण्डु चिन्नच्चापलु उन्ना विगानि, इन्ता मंदिकी वी एमात्रमुनी आयन तोवनेगा.
What are they among so many?
इन्ता मंदिकी अवी एमात्रमु?
That is the question of Andrew.
अंद्रयोका प्रश्न अदि.
But Jesus Christ was there and he was able to multiply the little that they had to feed the great multitude.
आयका एसु प्रभावर अकड़ उन्नार, आकुन्नी, आ चिन्नच्चापलु आरोटिलायन आशीर्वादिंचि, गोप्पा जनसमुहानी आयन बोशिंचेडु.
So many times, we are also faced with such questions in our hearts.
माने योका ह्रोदियालो गुड़ा नेकसालीलांटि प्रश्न नेदुर कुन्ता उन्नतम.
Numbers, chapter eleven.
संक्याकांडमु पदकुन्डवा अज्जायम.
Verse eleven and twelve.
संक्याकांडमु पदकुन्डवा अज्जायम.
See how Moses is burdened.
पदकुन्डु पनिंडु वच्छनालु, मोशे निमानु इकड़ा चुस्ताउन्, पदकुन्डु पनिंडु वच्छनालु, कागमोशे योहोवात इट्लननु, निवेलानी सेवकनु बादिंचिति वी नामीदनी कडाक्षम रानीका, ई जनलंदरी भारमुनु नामीदा पेट्नेला, नेने ई सर्वजनमुनु गर्बमुन दरिंचितिना, नेने वीरिनी कंटिना, पालिची पेंचेडु तंड्री, पसिपिल्ललनु, पसिपिल्लनु मोइनट्लु, नेनु वीरि तंडुलकु प्रमाणपोरकंगे इच्चिना देशमुनकु वीरिनी, नीरोमुन यत्तुकुनि पोम्मनी नातो चेप्पुचुन्नावु.
And in verse thirteen, he says, when should I have flesh to give unto all these people?
पदमुड़ वच्छनोलाइन नन्नाडु, ई समस्त प्रजलकु इच्चुटकु माम समुनाक्य कड़दि.
Verse twenty-two, shall the flocks and the herds be slain for them to suffice them?
यरवे रेंडा वच्छनम्, यरवे रेंडा वच्छन वारु त्रुप्तिगा तिन्नट्लिगा वारु निमित्तमु, गोरेलनु, पश्योलनु चंपवलना.
Or shall the fish of the sea be gathered to suffice them?
वारु त्रुप्तिगा तिन्नट्लु समुद्रपु चापलन्यु वारु निमित्तमु कोर्चवलना.
And then we know how Lord said, is my hand waxed short?
अपुर देवुडु अंताउन्नाडु, योहोवा बाहुबालमु तक्क्वयनदा, अनं देवु सल्विस्तुन्नाडु.
The Lord provided for them, for their sustenance in the wilderness.
आयका अरण्यमलो वारु जीविंच्छुंकोरकै देवु वारिकी अनुग्रहिस्तु वच्चर.
We have a living Savior.
मानु सजिवुडायना रक्षकुनि कलिगुण्नम.
Revelation one seventeen and eighteen.
प्राणिग्रंधमु वगुटाज्जायमु पदिहेडु पच्चेन्मिदु वच्छनालु.
Please let us read that verse together.
आयका वच्छनानि मानंदरं कलसित सदुकुन्नम.
Revelation one seventeen and eighteen.
प्राणिग्रंधमु वगुटाज्जायमु पदिहेडु पच्चेन्मिदु वच्छनालु, नेना आयनु चौड़गाने, चच्चिनवानिवाले आयन पादमुलियोद्दा पढ़तिनी, अंदरंकल्सदुकुन्नमंडी, आयन तनकुडीचेतिनी नामीदा उन्चि नातो इट्लननु, भयपड़कुमु, नेनु मोदतीवाडुनु, कडपटिवाडुनु, जीविंसुवाडुनु, मृत्तुडनाइतिनी गानि, इदिगो युगईगुमलु सजिवुडायना युन्नानु, मरियु मरणमयोक्ययु, पाताललोकमयोक्ययु, तालपुच्चेवुलु नास्वादियनमुलो उन्नवि.
He is the living Savior.
आयन जीविंच्छुंना रक्षकुडु.
He said, I was dead and behold, I am alive forevermore.
आयन चेपड़ु नेनु मृत्तिनाइतिनी गानि, इदिगो युगईगुमलु सजिवुडायना युन्नानु.
Ephesians three and verse twenty.
एफएस सिलिक्रासन पत्रिका मूड़ अज्जायम यरवय वच्छनम्.
We know these verses, let us read it together, but.
इदिगोड़ा मानंदरं कलसित सदुकुन्नम, एफएस सिलिक्रासन पत्रिका मूड़ अज्जायम यरवय वच्छनम्.
Now unto him that is able to do.
मानलो कार्य सादकमयना तनश्यक्त चुकुना, मानम अडुगोटिकनितेन, गुहिंचुवाटिकनितिकंटेन, अच्छे दिकमुगा चय शक्तिगला देवुनिकी, कृष्टेस्मूलमुगा संगमुलो तरतरमुलु समाधानमु, सदाकाल महिमा कलुगुनुगा कामिन.
We don't know, this was written in the experience of Paul.
पाउल वारिका अनुभव मीदि.
He says, now unto him that is able to do exceeding abundantly above all that he asked or even think.
ऊहिंचन वाटिकंटे, अडुगोटिकनिटिकंटे, अच्छे दिकमुगा चय शक्तिगलिगना देवुडु.
The Lord knows your petitions, the Lord knows your thoughts.
नियोका अवसत्ले एंटियाने देवुडेरिगिनवाडु.
He knows what you are thinking, what's your need.
नियो न्यू एम आलचिस्तुन्नावु, नियो अवसत्ति एंटियाने आयन एरिगुनु.
If you believe in, in his word, he can do abundantly more than you even exceeding abundantly above all that we ask or think.
नियो न्यू आयन योका माटनु, आयन वाक्यमुनंदि विश्वासमुच्चिनट्लाइते, अडिगिनवाटिकंटे, ऊहिंचन वाटिकंटे, अच्छे दिकमुगा आयन चय शक्तिगलिगना देवुडु.
The one who said, I am the resurrection and the life, what is impossible with him?
नेनु पुनरुत्थानमुनु जीवुन्नायुन्नानु, नाक असाज्जिमाइंदि एदैना कलदाननी अडिगिनवाडायन.
So what are the questions that may be in your hearts?
माने योका ह्रोदियाले अलांटि प्रश्न उड़नपटिकी.
Like these weak women there at the sepulchre.
यी बलिहिन्नमयना स्त्रीलु, वार कलिगनायका प्रश्नल वेले.
Who shall roll away the stone from the sepulchre?
योका समाधि द्वारमु नुंडी राय इनु मानकोरकु यावडु दुर्लिंचुनो?
For the stone was very great, आयका, the verse four says, the stone was very great.
आयका राय चाला गोप्पराय अनन निमानकी देवुनी वाक्यलो मानत्युस्तुनम.
And the Bible says, when they looked up.
वारु पाइक चुचिनपुरु.
They saw that the stone was rolled away.
आयका राय दुर्लिंपो बड़िउन्नि.
This is how God works in ways that are hidden to your eyes.
यी विदंगाने माने योका नेत्रालिकु मर्गयनवाट्नी देवु चेगाल्डु.
You may think that God will work in the way that you want it to happen.
नु अनुकुन्नट्लिगा देवुडु पनिजास्ताडन अनन अन्कुन्ताव.
But God has his own mysterious ways of moving stones and mountains and boulders from your life.
नियोका जीवितालो नुंचि परवतालनु, रालनु, आयन अद्भुतमयन विदानमुलो, आयन विदानमुलायन तोलगिस्ताडु.
Those women did not think that the angel was going to descend from heaven and move the stone.
वार अनुकुन्नारु, अनुकोले दु, देव दूता परलोकमु नुंडु वच्चायका राय इनु तोलगिस्तुन्दने.
But God did it for them.
आइते देवुडु वारिकोरकै चेसर.
The resurrection day reminds us that the Lord can move away every stone that is blocking your hope.
इदि मानकी ग्नाप्कुन जस्ताउन्नि, देवु मान जीवितालो नुंचि प्रति राय इनु प्रति बंडनु गुड़ा, तोलगिंस्गलिगनवाडि दिमाननी रिक्षण.
So if you are here sitting down with the same question.
यी प्रश्नतो इकड़ा कुच्चुना सोधर्डा सोधरी.
Who shall roll away this stone from the sepulchre?
योका समाधि द्वारमु नुंडी माकोरकु यावडु यी रातिनु तोलगिंचुनो?
God has the answer.
देवुडु समाधानमिस्ताउन्नाडु.
For them, the angel came down from heaven and moved with the stone.
वारिकोरकैते परलोकमु नुंडी देव दूता, आरात वच्ची आरातिनु तोलगिंचेडु.
They did not see it with their eyes.
वारिका नेत्राल्तो दानु वार चोले दु.
But God did it in a hidden mysterious way.
अद्भुतमयना आचेरकरमयन विदानमुलो देवु वारिकोरकु चेसर.
So much that they were amazed.
वार अंतगानु आचेरुपयार.
The second question.
रेंडा प्रश्न.
Luke, chapter twenty-four.
लुकासुवाता यरवय नाल गुअज्जायम.
And verse five.
आयदा वच्छनम्.
Luke twenty-four five.
लुकासुवाता यरवय नाल गुअज्जायम आयदा वच्छनम्, वारु भयपड़ी, मुकमुलनु नेलमोपी उड़गावीरु, सजिवुडायना वानिनी मीरेंदुकुम रुत्ललो वेदकुचुन्नार.
What is the question here?
इकड़ा उन्ना प्रश्न एंटी.
Why seek he the living among the dead?
सजिवुडायना वानिनी मीरेंदुकुम रुत्ललो वेदकुचुन्नार.
So many of us believers are seeking the living among the dead things of this world.
मानलो चाला मन्दि विश्वासलु, यी लोकमुलो सजिवुडायना वानिनी मृत्लो वेदुकुतुन्नम.
How sad that we are, who profess that we know the living God, we are seeking the living God among the dead things of this world.
सजिवुडायना देवुनी नेने एरिगुन्नाने निमानु चेप्तु, इन्नी सालु यी लोकमुलो ई मृत्तमयना वाटियंदु, सजिवुडायना देवुनी वेदुकुतुन्ना यंतो विचारकरमयन विष्यम.
On that day, this question was asked to those people.
आदिनाना योका प्रश्न वारिकी वेबडिंदी, प्रश्न वार्नी अडगबडिंदी.
This is the day of resurrection that we are remembering.
मानो ग्नाप्कुन जस्को वाली यी पुनरुत्थान दिनम.
And the same question comes to each one of us.
अदे प्रश्न मानंदरकी प्रति वक्करकुड़े इ प्रश्न मंदकरकोस्तुन्नि.
Why are you seeking the living among the dead?
सजिवुडायना वानिनी मीरेंदुकुम रुत्ललो वेदकुचुन्नार.
Paul says in Colossians, chapter three.
कोलेसिलिक्रासन पत्रिका मूड़ अज्जायमलो पाउल चेप्तुन्नाडु.
If you then be risen with Christ, seek those things which are above.
मीरु कृष्ण तो कुड़ा लेपबड़नवारैते वगुटोच्चनम, मीरु कृष्ण तो कुड़ा लेपबड़नवारैते पाइनुन्नवाटिने वेदुकुड़ी.
Where Christ seated on the right hand of God.
अकड़ा कृष्ण देवुनी कुड़िपार्ष्यमुना कुच्चुंडि उन्नाडु.
Verse two, set your affections on things above and not on things on the earth.
रेंडा वच्छनो पाइनुन्नवाटिमेदने गानि, बू सम्बंदमयन वाटिमेदा मनसु पेट्टकुनुकुड़ी.
Dear brothers and sisters, we are to seek, we are exhausted to seek the things that are above.
प्रिमयना सोधर्डा सोधरी, मानु पाइनुन्नवाटिने वेदकालियाने मान हच्चिरपुबड़तुन्नम.
One Peter, chapter one.
पेतुरासिनम मोदती पत्रिका वगुटाज्जायम.
Verses three and four.
मूड़ नाल गुवच्छनालु, मान प्रभोग एसु कृष्ण तंड्रयन देवुडस्तु तिम्पबंडुगाका, रुत्ललो नुंडी एसु कृष्ण तिरिगिलेचुटवलना, जीवमुतो कुड़ना निरीक्षण मान कलुगुनट्लु, अनगा अक्षयमयन अदियु, निर्मलमयन अदियु, वाड़बान्दियु नैन स्वास्यमु मान कलुगुनट्लु, आयन तन विशेष कनिकरमुचुपुना मनलनु मर्ला जन्मिंपचेसनो.
We have an inheritance incorruptible deserved in heaven for us.
मानकोरकै परलोकमुलो बद्रपर्चबडिना अक्षयमयन स्वास्यमुन अदि.
So Peter says in verse three, he has begotten us unto a lively hope by the resurrection of Jesus from the dead.
मुड़ वच्चुं मोदती बागलो मानत्युस्तुनम, मृत्लो नुंडी एसु कृष्ण तिरिगिलेचुटवलना, जीवमुतो कुड़ना निरीक्षण मान कलुगुनट्लु.
So your inheritance is in heaven.
कबटि माने योका स्वास्यमु परलोकमंदुन्नि.
What is that inheritance?
एंटी आस्वास्यमु?
Jesus said, fear not little flock, it is my father's good pleasure to give you the kingdom.
एसु प्रभाव चेप्ताउन्नार, चिन्नमंदा भयपड़कुड़ी, मीकु राज्यमयोटन तंड्रयोका बीस्तमयानु चेप्तुन्नाडु.
So the kingdom of God is the inheritance for each and every one of us who is a child of God.
देवुनियोका राज्यम, अदि मानंदरकी, यावरैते आयन योका बिडलगा चेबन्नारो, वारंदरियोका स्वास्यमु, देवुनियोका राज्यम.
But when we look at our Christian life in this world.
आइते यी लोकमुलो मान कृष्ण जीवितानी मानत्युस्ताउन्नपुरु.
We are so much attached to the things of this world.
यी लोक सम्बंदमयन विष्यालिक मान अंतगानु, मल्लमान अपगिंस्कुन्ताउन्नम.
Our minds and our, and our plans are only related to this world.
माने योका मनसुलाइतेने मी, माने योका प्रणालिकलाइतेने मी, इवन्नी केवलम ई बू सम्बंदमयन वाटिमेदने उड़तुन्नाव.
Our whole life and energy and strength is spent only on the things of this world.
मानो माने योका जीवित, मान जीवित अंता कुड़ा, माने योका शक्ति, मान सामर्जलन्नि कुड़ा, यी लोक सम्बंदमयन वाटिकोरकै मान कच्चुबेट्तुन्नम.
That is the condition of many of us.
मानलो चाला मन्दि योका स्थिति इदि.
But on this resurrection day.
यी पुनरुत्थान दिनाना.
Through that word, why seek he the living among the dead?
सजिवुडायना वानिनी मृत्लो मीरेंदुकु वेदुकुचुन्नारु अन्ना प्रश्न.
The Lord is asking you to draw your attention to things that are above.
पाइनुन्नवाटिमेदने मी दृष्टि उन्संडियाने, आयनम मान दृष्टिनी कौट्टुकोरकै अडूतू उन्नाडु.
He has kept an inheritance for every believer in the Lord Jesus Christ.
एसु कृष्णनु प्रति विश्वासिकोरकै, आयन स्वास्यमुनु सिद्धपर्चेडु.
A heavenly inheritance.
परलोक सम्बंदमयन स्वास्यम.
Are you living for that hope?
आयका निरीक्षण तो जीविस्तुनवा?
Are you seeking the Lord in this world?
यी लोकमुलो देवुनी वेदुकुतुन्नाव?
Or are you seeking the things of this world?
लेख यी लोक सम्बंदमयन विष्यालु वेदुकुतुन्नाव?
The dead things of this world.
यी लोक सम्बंदमयन मृत्तमयन विष्यालु.
One Corinthians six nine.
कोरिंदेलिक्रासन मोदती पत्रिका आर अज्जायम.
Again speaks to us that the inheritance is the kingdom of God.
कोरिंदेलिक्रासन मोदती पत्रिका आर अज्जायम तुमिदा वच्छनमलो स्वास्यमुन गुरिंचि अकड़ा माट्लाड तुन्नि.
So we are not reading that verse, we are not going to read that verse, but it speaks that of the kingdom of God.
आयका वच्छनानि मान सदोटो ले दु, गानि देवुनी राज्यमुन गुरिंचि चप्पुबड़तुन्नि.
Such people cannot inherit the kingdom of God, one Corinthians six nine says.
आर अज्जायम वोटोकोरिंदी तुमिदा वच्छनमलो चप्पर्ना आ प्रजलु, वारु देवुनी राज्यमुनकु वारसिल कालेयरु.
Jesus said, that to him that overcomeeth, and I will make him to sit on my throne, and in Revelation three twenty-one.
एसु, एसु कृष्ण प्रभाव चेपर, प्राणिग्रंधमु वगुटाज्जायम रे मुड़ वच्छनमलो, जैन सुवान्नि नातो कुड़ा, नातंडिसिमासुन्नंदु कुच्चुंडा बेट्टुदुन चेप्पर.
To him that overcomeeth will I grant to sit with me on my throne, even as I also overcame, and I'm sit, sat down with my father in his throne. Revelation three twenty-one.
प्राणिग्रंधमु मूड़ अज्जायम यरवय वच्छनम, प्राणिग्रंधमु मूड़ अज्जायम रे वोटोचु, नेनु जैन चीन नातंडितो कुड़ा, आयन सिमासुन्नंदु कुच्चुंडि अन्ना प्रकारमु, जैन सुवान्नि नातो कुड़ा, नासिमासुन्नंदु कुच्चुंडा निच्छेतनो.
So, we come to the final question.
कबटि इप्पुर मान चिवरि प्रश्न कोस्ताउन्नम.
John, chapter twenty.
योहन सुवाता यरवय अज्जायम.
John, chapter twenty, and let us read verse fifteen.
योहन सुवाता यरवय अज्जायम पदिहेडु वच्छनु सदुकुन्नम, एसु अम्मा इन्दुकी एर्चुचुन्नावु, यवनिनी वेदुकुचुन्नावु, अनि आमिन अडुगगा.
Jesus said unto her, woman, why weepest thou whom seekest thou?
एसु, अम्मा इन्दुकी एर्चुचुन्नावु, यवन्नी वेदुकुचुन्नावनी आमिन अडुगगा.
We know how Mary Magdalene came to the sepulchre in the very early hours of that day.
आदिनाना प्रात्काल समयमलो मग्दले नमरिया, अकड़िको वच्चनट्लिगा मान एरिगुदुमो.
And we can read that verses one to ten.
वकट नुंडी पदिवच्छनालम मान अमाटा, अकड़ा अमाट्लु चौड़गालम.
Then we see in verse eleven.
पदकुन्डवच्छनोलम मानत्युस्तामु.
Mary stood without at the sepulchre weeping.
आइते मरिया समाधि बाइट निलिची एर्चुचुंडेनो.
She was wanting to see Jesus.
आमे एसु प्रभावनी चौड़ालन कोर्कुन्तुन्नि.
Then in verse thirteen, verse thirteen, the angels tell her, woman, why weepest thou?
पदमुड़ वच्छनम, वारु अम्मा इन्दुकी एर्चुचुन्नावनी आमिन अडुगगा.
And she says, they have taken away my Lord.
आमे ना प्रभुनी अवरो यत्तुकुनि पोइरि.
Now read verse fourteen.
इप्पुर पद्नाल गुवच्छनम, आमे ई माटा चेप्पी, वेनकतत्तु तिरिगि, एसु निलिची उड़ुटा चूचेनु गानि, आयन एसु अनि गुत्तुपट्टले दु.
She turned herself back and she saw Jesus.
आमे वेनकतत्तु तिरिगि, एसु प्रभावनी चुचिंदि.
And the Bible says, she knew not that it was Jesus.
देवुनी वाक्य सल्विस्तुन्नि, आयन एसु अनि आमे गुत्तुपट्टले दु.
Why do you think that Mary Magdalene could not recognize Jesus?
मग्दले नमरिया एसु प्रभावनी इन्दुकु गुत्तुपट्लाक्पयनु ग्रहिंस्गलवा?
The book of Isaiah, chapter fifty-two.
ऐश्याग्रंधमु यावे रेंडा अज्जायम.
Verse fourteen.
ऐश्याग्रंधमु यावे रेंडा अज्जायम पद्नाल गुवावच्छनम, निन्नो चूची ए मनिषि रूपमुकंटे आतनी मुकमुनु, नर रूपमुकंटे आतनी रूपमुनु चाला विकारमुनी, चाला मन्दि यलागु विस्मय मुंदिरो.
His visage was more mad than any man.
नर ए मनिष्णियोका नर रूप, ए मनिषि रूपमुकंटे आतनी मुकमु.
And his form more than the sons of men.
नर रूपमुकंटा आतनी रूपमुनु चाला विकारमायनु.
This was Jesus on the cross of Calvary.
कलवरिस्तिलोलो एसु प्रभाव यी विदंगाउन्नार.
His face was so mad than any man.
ए मनिष्योका रूपमुकंटे आयन रूपम मारिपयिंदि.
And Mary Magdalene was one of the women who stood near the cross of Calvary.
मग्दले नमरिया आयका सिलुवायोद्दा नेलबड़नवारलो वकामे.
She saw him in that formless condition, she saw him last in that formless condition, there was no form.
अलांटि रूपमुले निस्तितुलो चिवरिगा आमे एसु प्रभावनी चुचिंदि.
And maybe she was, she was thinking, that was the form of Jesus.
अदे एसु प्रभावरिका रूपमुनी अनन आमु अन्कुन्ताउन्नि.
Maybe she wanted to see him and thinking, okay, that is the last form.
अदि तन योका चिवरि रूपम आमे चूचिना चिवरि रूपम अदि.
Our sins put Jesus on the cross and made him visage more mad than any man.
माने योका पापमुले एसु कृष्ण प्रभावनी आयका सिलुम्मिदा, सुरूपमयननु सोगसायननु लेनिवाडिगा चेसनाय.
Beyond the recognition of any man.
ए मनिष्योका रूपमुकंटे.
This Mary, as she turned back herself, she could not recognize Jesus.
यी मरिया वेनकितिरिगिनपुरु एसु प्रभावनी गुत्तुपट्टलाक्पयिंदि.
Because Jesus was here in his resurrection glory.
इन्दिकंटे इप्पुर एसु प्रभावर तनु पुनरुत्थान महिमलो उन्नाडु.
And we see that we know that how many people's eyes were withholden to see him in his glory.
आयन योका चाला मन्दि योका नेत्रालु आयन महिमलो चोडलाक्पताउन्नार.
Then in verse fifteen, the question, John, John twenty, verse fifteen.
योहन सुवाता यरवय अज्जायम पदिहेडु वच्छनम.
That is the third question.
इदि मुड़वा प्रश्न.
Woman, why weepest thou?
अम्मा इन्दुकी एर्चुचुन्नावु.
Whom seekest thou?
यवन्नी वेदुकुचुन्नावु.
Although Mary had such devotion for the Lord, she was unaware that he was risen again and that the power which was manifested by his resurrection was meant only for those who believe on him.
आमे एसु प्रभु यंदु विश्वासमुच्चिनपटिकी कुड़ा, आयन तिरिगिलेचुट द्वारा पुनरुत्थान शक्ति, यावरैते आयन विश्वासमुच्चर, वार मात्रक कलिगुण्डारु.
Those who believe on him, to them, Jesus will appear.
यावरैते आयन विश्वासमुच्चार, वारिकी एसु प्रभाव प्रत्यक्षम उतार.
After his resurrection, he did not appear to anyone who did not believe on him.
एसु प्रभुनंदु यावरैते विश्वासमुच्चले दु, वारिकी आयन पुनरुत्थानु तर्वाता, वारिकी अब्बरकी कुड़ा प्रत्यक्षम कालेदु.
There were many people on the day of his crucifixion, many groups of people.
सिलुवे बड़ना आयका दिनाना, चाला मन्दि गुम्पला प्रजलु अकड़ा उन्नार.
They said, if thou be the son of God, come down, then we will believe you.
नु चेप्पनट्लाइते अकड़ा मान चुस्ते, वार चेप्ताउन्नारु, नु देवुनी कुमाडु वायनट्लाइते क्रिंदी दीगर, अपुर मेन नमुतावन्नारु.
That Lord Jesus Christ after his resurrection, he never appeared to anyone of those people.
एसु कृष्ण प्रभाव पुनरुत्थानुडैन तर्वाता, अलांटि प्रजलकी अब्बरकी कुड़ा तनतनु प्रत्यक्ष पर्चक्लेदु.
The Lord Jesus only appeared to his own people, to those who, who were his own children.
एसु कृष्ण प्रभाव तन सोन्ता पिललकु, आयन वारिकी प्रत्यक्षम उतार.
So we see here, the Lord Jesus stood by her and spoke to her.
इप्पुर अकड़ा आयन आम्दकर नेलबड़ि, आम्तो माट्लाड तुन्नाडु.
But she could not recognize him, she could not recognize him.
आइते आमे आयनु ग्रहिंस्गलेक्पयिंदि.
Many believers are like Mary.
चाला मन्दि विश्वासलु मरियावले उन्नार.
We are, we, we are, we are so weak in our, in our faith, very weak in our faith.
माने योका विश्वासलो चाला बलिहिन्नु गमन उठाउन्नम.
We weep at the smallest trial and tribulation that comes to us.
चिन्नचिन्ना समस्यलु शौधन्य चुनपुरे, मान चाला बलिहिन्नु गनपड़तुन्नम.
But the Lord Jesus Christ, he wants us to, he wants to make us more than conquerors with him.
मानो आयनकोरकै विजयवंतमयन जीवितानी कलिगुण्डालन आयन कोर्कुन्नाडु.
We see what happened, what did Lord Jesus tell her?
एसु प्रभाव आम्तो चेप्पनपुरे एंदरिंद मान चुच्च.
She wanted to, she wanted to actually hold him. Verse nineteen, Jesus said unto her, don't touch me, for I'm, read, verse nineteen, verse seventeen, John twenty seventeen.
योहन सुवाता यरवय अज्जायम पदिहेडु वच्छनम, एसु आम्तो नेनि इन्कनु तंड्रयोद्दकु पोल, एक्की पोलेदु गनिका, नानु मुट्टुकोनवद्दु. आइते ना सहोदल्योद्दकु वेली, ना तंड्रयु, मी तंड्रयु, नादेवुनु, मी देवुन्नायन वानियोद्दकु केक्की पोचुन्नान, निवार्तो चेप्पु मनेनु.
So we know that she wanted to show her, his, her devotion to him.
इप्पुर आमे तनयोका भक्तिनी, देवुनिकु चुपिंचालन कोर्कुन्ताउन्दि.
Because she loved him.
इन्दिकंटे आयन प्रेमिस्तुन्दि काबटि.
But Jesus said, don't touch me now.
आइते एसए चेप्तुन्नाडु, नु नन मुट्टवद्दु.
I have to ascend to my father and I'm not yet ascended to my father, I have to ascend to my father and your father and to my God and your God.
नेनि इन्कनु तंड्रयोद्दकु केक्की पोलेदु, गनिकनु मुट्टुकोनवद्दु, नातंड्रयु, मी तंड्रयु, नादेवुनु, मी देवुन्नायन वानियोद्दकु केक्की पोचुन्नानु.
But we know how when he appeared again to another group, that's Mary, he allowed her to, to hold her, hold him by the feet and worship him.
आइते मानत्युस्ताउन्डा मरोक्सार, आयन प्रत्यक्षमयन अपुरु, वार आयन योका पादमुल पट्कुन, आराधिन स्तनिकी अनुमतिच्चर.
Also in the same chapter twenty.
अदे अज्जायम रे रय अज्जायम.
John twenty, he allows Thomas to, he says to Thomas in verse twenty-seven, reach hither thy finger and behold my hands, and reach hither thy hand and thrust it into my side. reach hither thy finger and behold my hands and reach hither thy hand and thrust it into my side
yaroyajaymu yaroyedavachnum lo thomata chaptavuntadu tarvata thomanu chuchi ni vrelu itu chaachi na chetlu chudumo ni chaychaachi na prakalavunchi aviswasi vikaka viswasi vayundumanenou
so it was for a purpose that God did not allow Mary Magdalene to touch him
devudu vaka prachekamayana udeshamuto tanitakunda undatanki madhaleeni mariyaku anumativaleidu takitanki
he had to ascend to heaven and carry his blood in the presence of the Father
aynaparalokaanika aaro handai tanayaka rakthamnu tandriyadda tanu untsali
we know he is our everlasting high priest
manu tilsu aynam mana pradana yaajukudu paraloka puyajukudu
Hebrews chapter 4
hebril krassana patrika nalgajay
verse 14
padnalkavachnum hebril krassana patrika nalgajaymu padnalkavachnum akashimandalamugunda velinad devuni kumadaina jesuano goppa pradana yaajukudu manukunnavadu ganika manu upukunadani gatigachepattudumo
so we have this everlasting high priest
e nichamayana pradana yaajukudu manukunnavadu
by his own precious blood he he finished the work of the atonement of our sin
mana papamlu korike prayichitamuchesina tanam amulyamayana rakthamunu tanasontarakthamunu tiskunvelina
now he carries his precious blood in the presence of the Father
e amulyamayana rakthani tandriyaka sanidiki aynatiskunveltunnavadu
and by his precious blood we are cleansed and washed from every sinful thought and every sinful deed
ayaka preciousthamayana rakthamudvara manu yaka prati papamu papapu alochina papapu krielni aynakadigipavitra parustunnavadu
it is for this purpose that Jesus did not allow Mary Magdalene at that moment of time to touch him
a udeshamtonene a samayamlo a gadyalu madhaleeni maria tanitakitanki aynan anumatinchleido
Mary stood weeping at the sepulchre
ayaka samadi velupala maria edustundhi
not knowing that Jesus had to carry the blood into the presence of the Father
tandriyaka sanidiki tanarakthamunu tiskunvelinad jesay nugurinchina sari navugahanaleka
we also we weep at small temptations and trials that come to us
konisarlu mana jivitolo yedurukune chinnachinnasamasyalu shodanlu
but Lord has a purpose
aitha devudu vaka prachekamayana udeshankaliguntadu
he has a purpose for every trial and temptation that he allows in our life
mana jivitala aynan anumatinche prati shodana parikshiki aynaku udeshankaliguntadu
we have to wait sufficiently on his on him
aynindu manu adharapadnavaranga unnavali
to hear his voice
aynasvaranimana ventanki
we have to be obedient to him
aynuku videthatsupali
we have to wait till he speaks to us
aynamantomatlaade antavarku manu vechi unnavali
just had as he dealt with Mary Magdalene on that day he wants to deal with us in the same way
aynan adinana madhaleeni mariyato chepinatliga nedukuda mantovayana chaptavunnavadu
three questions on the resurrection day
punarutana dinana moodu prashnalu
who shall roll away the stone from the door of the sepulchre
samadi dwaramu yoddanundi ma korike a gopparatani avaru talaginsuno
why seek the living among the dead?
sajudeainavani neemrutulamir endukvadukutsunnavaru
woman why weepest thou?
amma endukya edchutunnavu
now we are going to look at one appearance of Jesus
jesu krishpravariyaka vaka pratekshitamayana chudam
very briefly
chalaklaptanga
John chapter 21
yohansuvartha yaroyavutajay
this is the appearance of Jesus to his erring disciples the disciples went away
yavarete venaki velipayar alanti aadi sishilaku a praypratekshamayana vidhanamidi
we are going to partake of the Lord's table very shortly
manu chala tharalo pravyaka balalo palpandavatuunam
now we will read John 21
yohansuvartha yaroyavutajaymu
verse 12
paninda vachnum chapalu antavistarumga padinannu valapigalalaidu jesu rende bojinamu chedani varathanenu aynaprabhuani variki tilsinandana ni vevadu vanisishilu yavadu no aynanu aduga tegimpalaidu
Jesus said unto them come and dine
jesu pravaru vartho chaptavunnavadu rende bojinamu cheddi
whom is he inviting here?
yavani ahvanistunnavadikada
verse 1 verse 3
mudavachnum ne simonupetharu nenu chapalapattabodinani varthanaga varu memunu ni to kuda vachidamanri
these were the disciples who were erring from their call
wa ee yaka sishilu var yaka pilupununchi venaki maldinasishilu viru
the Lord Jesus Christ told them I will make you fishers of men
jesu krishpravar varichepanene mimale manushilupattu jarlaga chastanandcheparu
but here they were making their own plans and under the leadership of Peter these seven disciples all including Peter went for fishing
pethutoto kalasi edugu sishilu pethriyaka naikatholow varisontapranalikalaprakaram var velitu vacharu
they had gone away from the call and from the purpose of Jesus
jesayaka udeshamununchi aynapilupununchi varu venaki maldararu
but we see the love and the compassion of the Lord Jesus Christ
aitha manu chustavuntham jesu krishpravariyaka prema aynaka kanikaramu varipattla
he did not punish them he did not chastise them
varni aynasixshinsalaidu
but he was waiting on the shore for them to return back
aitha var marla tirigiraavatunkorike varik bojino sidhapparchadu
verse 4
nalgavachnum
John 21:4
yohansuvartha yaroyavutajaymu nalgavachnum suriyodaimaguchundaga jesu darini nilicheno aitha ayni jesuani sishilu gutupattalaidu
yes Jesus was standing on the shore to receive them back
varni marla tirigichertskotunkorike jesu pravaru ayaka darinani nilichadu
in spite of their failure to remain obedient to the call
devuniyaka pilupukilobadu undavalsina ayaka paristulowaru var venakadugvesnaputiki
verse 3 says that night they caught nothing
a mudavachnum chappadutundhi mudavachnumlo a raatriyemu pattalaidu
whatever you do outside the will of God you will face failure and disappointment
devuniyaka chittaniki baita manu amy chesnakaani nu apajayaanepundukuntavu nirashnepondukuntavu
you may be a very experienced man like Peter
pethruvalenu chala anubodundainav manishvayundatsu
he was an experienced fisherman
aynat chala anubodundainav jalari
but on that night it was such a depressing thing they caught nothing
ayaka raatriyantavar prayaspandaputiki kuda amy pattalakparu
there was nothing more shameful than for a fisherman to return back empty
kali hastal thoti venaki tirigiraavatam anedhi a jalari kentoo sigukaramayana avmankaramayana visyam
but he had gone away from the purpose and the will of God
devuniyaka chittamununchi devuniyaka udeshanunchi varu tapipoyaru
if you do things in your own will and plan they will at the end leave you empty and dry and disappointed
okavela niyoka sonta isthamuchopunani sonta pranalikaluchopunavilnatlate chivari ki kali hastal thoti migalavalsostundhi
Jesus was standing on the shore he did not come to punish them but he came to receive them back unto himself
jesu krishpravariyaka samudradarina nilabedinavadu indigandaviyani sikshinsutunkorikkaadugani varni marla tirigichertskotunkoriku
in verse 5 he asks children do you have any meat?
aithavachnumla aynadutunnavadu pillalara bojinamunakumiyadu yamaena unnavada?
they answered no
var yaka samadhanamintanti amy leidu
you have to confess your failure your disappointment to the Lord
niyoka apajayaanini niyoka nirashinunu devun sanidu upukavali
then only Lord can work for you
apudu matramen devudunikorukpanichegaladu
so the the Lord Jesus Christ welcomed these disciples back
kavati jesu pravaru sishunni marla tirigahvanistavunnavadu
he says in verse 12 Jesus said unto them come and dine
paninda vachnumla aynipilustavunnavadu jesu rende bojinamu cheddi
we also read now in verse 10
padavachnulokuda manu chustam
Jesus said unto them bring off the fish which you have now caught
jesu miripputupattina chapalalo konnithiskunrendani vartho chappaga
look at the grace of the Lord Jesus Christ
jesu krishpravariyaka krupunuchodandi
graciousness of him his graciousness
ayni yaka krupa antovistarum
he says bring off the fish which you have now caught
nu mirupattina chapalukuda tiskunrendi
actually they caught nothing
vastavani kvar amy pattalaidu
when they obeyed the Lord then the fishes came into the net
epadeite varu pravu martaku videthatsupudu chapala vallanukochinay
Jesus does not take the glory for himself
jesu krishpravariyaka mahimunu tanavarka aynunnskolan korkolaidu
it was at his command that the fishes came into the nets
aynan agnetopune a chapala vallanukochinay
it was not the efforts of the disciples
ee sishilayaka panyamkaadadi
but look at the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ
aitha chodandi jesu krishpravariyaka krupa
he did not take the glory for himself
aynasontaniga aynamahimunu tiskotankistupattalaidu
so many times we boast about our accomplishments and our achievements even in the service of God
devuniyaka seavalo anekasarlu manu chesina karyalubatti manu entavaseinchavaranaga untam
we boast of our talents and gifts
manu kichina talantulu varalubatti adsesstuntam
but this is not the spirit of the Lord Jesus Christ
aitha jesu krishpravariyaka atma idhikadu
he said bring off the fish which you have now caught
aynachaptavunnavadu miripputupattina chapalalo konnithiskunrendi
then we read this word is coming three times in this portion
ee yaka bagamlo immaata moodusarlu vastundhi
verse 7
edavachnum
it is the Lord
aynaprabhu
it is the Lord
aynaprabhusumi
okay then again verse 12
paninda vachnum
who art thou knowing and none of the disciples thus ask him who art thou knowing that it was the Lord?
aynaprabhuani variki tilsinandana ni vevadu vanisishilu yavadu na aynan adugatigimpalaidu
verse 7 it comes two times
edava vachnumlo rendu sarlusunnamata yes aynaprabhusumi ani pethurtoto chepeno aynaprabhuani simonupethru vini
so three times in this portion it is the Lord
igadamanu ee bagamlo aynaprabhuani marta moodusarlu vastundhi
yes he is the Lord of the heavens the earth and the seas
aunu aynakashumunaku bhoomikini samudramunaku pravainavadu
on that day the the disciples realized that eyes were open to see that he is the Lord
adinana sishilayaka netralu teravanna aynaprabhuani guttinscharu
there was a time there was a occasion when the disciples were in the ship
ayaka wardalo unnav sishilu wardalo unnav sandarbavutundhi
and there was a great storm
goppatufanuchindi
and Jesus was was sleeping in the in the boat
ayaka wardalo jesu pravari nidrapothunnavaru
he rose up and he said peace be still
aynalachi gardinchii nimmalamuga unduani chepadu
and they worshipped him saying even the winds and the waves they obey him
galiyo samudramunu inukulobadtsunnavanani var aynne aaradincharu
so our Lord Jesus Christ is the Lord of the seas is the Lord of your life
kavati mana pravainakristu aynasamudramunaku devudu mana jivitalaku aynaprabhu
in verse 9
tumida vachnum
John 21:9
yohansuvartha yaroyavutajaymu tumida vachnum
when they came to the land they saw a fire of coals there and fish laid thereon and bred
var dighi dariki raganee akada nipulnu watimedeni unsibanna chapalnu rotayukanabadano
so we see here the fire speaks of the love with Jesus prepared in order to warm them
akada nipulu avi manu yemnapkunjastavunyante jesu krishpravaru varni vetsagachaitunkorike a nipulunchinatliga manu chustam
because the whole night they were in the sea
indigandevara raatriyantagoda samudralavunnavaru
but as soon as they came to land they already had seen this this fire that was prepared by the Lord Jesus Christ
bhoomyadukochinapudu jesu krishpravaru sidhapparchinani nipulnavar chucharu
this speaks of the love of Jesus in order to keep them warm
varni vetsagunsitunkorike aynad devuni jesay premanu adhimanu chupistundhi
the table speaks to us of the great love of Jesus
pravayaka balla pravariyaka goppa premanu mantomatlartundhi
Jesus said this is my body broken for you this is my blood shed for you
jesu pravacheparu idhina sheriramu mi koraku nalagotabanna na sheriram
do this
mi korukchinnimpobanna na rakthamancheparu
do this in remembrance of me
dini chaitatwaranana napkunjaskundancheparu
he loved his disciples till the end
sishulni antavarku jesay preminchadu
he loved Judas he loved Peter he loved all the disciples
jesu krishpravaru pethurni preminchadu sishilandani guda preminchadu
the love of Jesus knows no limits and no bounds
jesu pravariyaka preamuku hadulu paramitulu levu
there is no pit that is so deep where the love of Christ is not deeper still
devuniyaka prema krishpravariyaka prema antalo taina loya marokiti edhi kuda ledu
the bread speaks that we should feed upon the word of God
ee yaka rutelu manuki dene gurinchimatlatunyante devuni vakyamudvara manu pochimpabartam
then Jesus tells to Simon feed lovers thou me Simon feed my sheep
apudu tarvata jesu pravaru simonupethurtanta unnavadu simonupethru ni unanekuga premissunava nagorepilalunu meppumo
feed my lambs
nagore gorilunu kaayumo
so two times he says feed my lambs and feed my sheep
runusar line chaptavunnavadu na yaka gorrepillalunu meppumo nagorepilalunu meppumanen
our love for the Lord Jesus Christ is real when we begin to feed to feed the lambs and the sheep
jesu krishpravari korike aynaprema tanagorelunu meppatunlo kanapadutundundhi
yes our love for the Lord Jesus is real when we begin to share to others what we have
manu yamaite kaligunnavamo danithaliku pansikotam anedani dwara krishpravu nandunna mana prema vashtivikamayandane telibaduntundi
Jesus is inviting each and every one of us just as he did the disciples come and dine
krishpravaru sishulni ahvanichnatliga rende bojinamu cheddi anani manu pratyvakani kuda aynahvanistunnavadu
though these disciples they failed they were full of failure and disappointment yet Jesus restored them back
ee sishilu puurtiga apajayaltanimpobanna putiki nirashto nimboobanna putiki devudu tirigivarni samukuchadu
the Lord is able to restore you back to his to himself and to his service
pravu tanakorike tanasavakorike ninu marla tirigisamukuchagalu
remember the three questions that were asked on the resurrection day
punarutana dinana adagabanna moodu prashnliknapkumunsukundam
nothing is impossible with God
devuniyiki asajamayandehdi kuda ledu
don't seek the living among the dead
sajudeainavani neemrutulavadu
wait for the Lord like Mary had to wait wait sufficiently upon him
aynakorike vechi undu aynasamadhanamichewark vechi undu
like Mary had to wait you also wait for the Lord sufficiently
maria eyvidhangaite vechi undo alaga niukuda aynakorike vechi undu
and as we read in this appearance the ninth appearance of Jesus to his disciples
krishpravaru aynapratekshamayana tumida sari tanasishilu pratekshamavatuvachadu
he invites each and every one of us saying come and dine
rende bojinamu cheddi manthokuda aynachaptavunnavadu